Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All to the community, this is a time for citizens who would like to address the commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking to after review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. We had no public comment last meeting. We have none scheduled for tonight, as far as I know. Is that correct? staff reports, community and recreation services monthly report. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The rec report is in your packet. I'll just review a couple of items. Aquatics, as you know, the pool is closed at this time in the off-season. Our aquatics coordinator has been working on the 2025 programming schedule and working on preparations for hiring for our summer staff. It's already that time to be thinking about it because we start training lifeguards end of February, early March timeframe. So we will start the hiring process probably in February. She's getting excited about that because it'll be her first summer with us, Georgia. And I will try to have her come in maybe the next meeting. So if you haven't met her yet, the rest of you can meet her and get to know her a little bit too. Preschool was off for a couple of weeks for winter break, so they're just getting back at it. Community services, since our last meeting, we had a high-raising ceremony for the US Space Force just before the holidays. It was their third birthday anniversary. We celebrated them. We are working on finalizing the City Line newsletter for the winter, which should be published within the week. And then, of course, as we'll talk about tonight, we've got orange tree painting today, which is scheduled for March fifteenth and sixteenth. So we'll start planning for that. Special events, Christmas in the Park, we held just after our last meeting. And it was a fun holiday celebration. Long parade still, and we're still working through the kinks on trying to get that lockdown to just under an hour. But overall, a good event. This weekend is the Litchfield Park Gathering, our annual Native American festival. So we've been out on the festival grounds working on that. We're gonna start checking in tomorrow. Festival is free and open to the public, ten AM to five PM, Saturday and Sunday. So we hope that you and your friends and family will stop by and join us for that. Next weekend, it's Sunday the nineteenth. A couple of rock bands will be out on the Wigwam lawn doing their free Arts in the Park concert. And then, end of the month, January twenty-fifth, is the trout fishing derby. I think the competitive session has been pretty much sold out. And we are still have people registering for those afternoon sessions. And that's mainly families with young children that don't want to wake up in the morning, but still want to come out and have fun fishing. That'll be fun to see. So a very busy January for rec. And Pat will fill you in on all the fun stuff that's happening with sports, too.
Thank you, Tricia. So our winter basketball and T-ball season started last Saturday. So all the kids are excited to get out there to play basketball and start the season. This weekend is week two, and we also have picture days. So everyone's ready to get the pictures taken. Spring registration opened on Monday. And since then, we have two hundred kids already registered in between basketball, soccer, and flag football. We have about fifty kids in basketball, twenty-seven in flag football, and a hundred and twenty-three kids in soccer already. We did add age groups this year in soccer, so we're going to age fourteen. So we have kids aged four and fourteen. We're testing that out. Our four and five is already almost halfway full. So, and just about three days, three days, we're already almost halfway full on that age group. It's exciting to see. And then, at the end of February, is the Litchfield Park Run. We currently have a hundred and seven runners that are registered. Registration, early bird, ends on January twenty-fourth, will be the last day until prices increase for that. So if you haven't, if you want to come and do either the ten K or five K or even a fun run or a one mile, go make sure, you know, spread the word to get registered before the January 11th deadline. But we're excited to see those numbers where they're at, too. That's what you to respond.
Good way to check that. Here we go.
Yeah.
Tricia Gertz. Just question on the parades. You, would you be seeking input on maybe criteria for the flows or the entries? So that you can have a, I don't want to call it, more refined set of qualified entries next year, or no?
Um, I mean, we're always open to suggestions, for sure. But I don't know that we are looking for criteria from the outset. And we're still focused on the hometown feel, lots of kids, and that kind of stuff. What we tried to do this year was we charged a small fee for businesses that wanted to get into the parade to see if that would deter. It didn't. So we, uh,
Yeah.
So we either raise the fee or limit that to only businesses that are Litchfield Park or that can prove that, you know, they have some kind of commitment to the city. I don't know if that's the way to do it to eliminate. But sometimes it's, I think really, we could use more volunteers. Volunteers that help push everybody along. Because sometimes we get lags with little kids or bigger groups. And we have, as Andy knows, a good set, a core set of volunteers that are down at where everybody gathers and gets ready. But then, once the parade starts up Old Litchfield Road, we don't have any volunteers there to kind of keep everybody on track. And I think that's the piece we're missing.
And those need to be grownups, not high school volunteers.
Yeah.
Grownups who aren't afraid to say.
Yes, exactly.
Only businesses that donate for the orange tree painting. Or come out and pay trees.
Yeah, right? What was the fee? The business? It was just ten bucks. We thought we'd see if that would deter. And it didn't, you know.
If you add two zeros.
Well, you couldn't, you have a different rate for businesses that service Litchfield Park versus just, you just want to advertise here, essentially.
Well, I mean, it's sponsorship, right? That's what it's doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the bottom line is, the kids are waiting for Santa and Santa's at the end, and when it's an hour and forty minutes long.
A little long.
That's too long for four-year-olds. Who are just eating candy.
They're sick by the time Santa comes.
Yeah. So, I mean, we learned our lesson last year because in the past, we had said activities will start at eleven or as soon as the parade is done. Until last year, more or less, we kept everything closed until the parade ended. This year, we didn't do that because we knew there was going to be that chance because the parade was long again. And we didn't want, we wanted everybody to kind of start filtering out and doing that. But, so, we'll keep on tweaking until we get it right.
Perhaps we could brainstorm, put it on the agenda for like August or September, so.
Yeah, maybe August or just before we actually open parade applications. It's a good time for it. Yes, definitely we welcome the input.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the fishing derby. Just walking around the lake, I've noticed there's more mud on like the north side than there usually is. I don't know if you've seen it, if you're aware, but.
That's caused by the ducks.
Yeah.
Ducks and geese. We reached out to multiple pest control companies. I worked, I reached out to Erzenelone Lake and Pond Management. They've suggested that we use concentrated grape juice sprayed around the lake because they don't like the sourness. So we've been doing that. We've applied it for the last couple of weeks to see if we can get them to stop doing this. We filled it in with dirt. We put sod back on top, and then it's tore up next week. Fortunately, I even talked to Game and Fish about this, and they suggested we do something like that, too. Fortunately, with a lot, you know, large-bodied water like this, you know, we're getting migration coming in. And over time, we're gonna have more and more. They're gonna cause damage, so.
City authorized foul archery hunting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Rocks, like pebbles, with that?
So the last bash that we fixed, which was, I'm gonna say, two months ago now, we did, we put quarter minus under that to see if that would deter them from tearing it up. They just moved down. They keep migrating down the lake. So they didn't touch that area. But now they've, they're moving, they're moving more to the east of the lake. So there's tenant-in sections.
I have twelve in my pool. And I have now rubber rattlesnakes, a thorn, and one of those evil hanging things, and they're gone.
The damages will be fixed before the trout.
Okay. I was gonna point out, it might be something to be aware of if you're, it could impact how many spaces or if you need to.
Well, we're to get it, to get it ready.
I know, so after talking with Arizona Game and Fish, ducks and geese like soft soils. Or digging, I don't know what they're looking for, to be honest with you, some kind of worms, grub, whatever it may be. So if that soil is hard-packed soil, they usually don't bother it because it's easier for, or it's harder for them to penetrate the ground. They suggested cutting the irrigation off for a while to let that ground harden up. Well, unfortunately, I don't really want to do that because now I get, you know, complaints of, hey, everything's dying around the lake. So that's why we kind of jumped into this concentrated grape juice. We're gonna give this a try and see if this works.
Wine tasting is preceding the trout.
We've had a few very weird looks, asking us why we're spraying grape juice everywhere. As we explained to some of the residents.
Yeah. Are there any more questions? Public Works Monthly Report presenter Kyle Ames, Director of Public Works.
Chairman Taddy, members of the commission. Good to see everybody after the holidays. The report's pretty short due to our winter closure that we had this, back in January. Just a few things that I want to touch on. Christmas decorations are being removed. Sad day. Hate to see those go away. Always enjoy a little look at every morning and at night. So originally, these were scheduled to be removed on Monday, the thirteenth. I did just get an update today that they're actually gonna start tonight. At one o'clock in the morning to not interrupt school traffic and then morning rush hour. They will be removing the larger decorations, the navous hanging banners. They're gonna leave the palm tree lighting up for another additional two weeks, which I was okay with. It's kind of an ambiance light, so, but they'll be back out in about two weeks to do those as well. West Coast Harbors has started the fruit picking this week. They started on Monday, the sixth. That service is still gonna be offered to the residents at the same cost as the previous years. There's no increase. We've directed residents to contact West Coast Harbors directly, under the city. We do get a lot of that, and you guys call them so they can come out to our address. But we just, it's easier if they, if they contact West Coast Harbors directly. We've been working on the Scout Park underpass, new triangle with the walking path. We've added some trees, shrubs. We're getting ready for some concrete benches, or concrete paths for the seating benches. The gravel probably will not start until the end of this month. Staff's kind of planning to catch up right now due to the winter closure and some other things done. But we'll get that started towards the end of this month. The Litchfield Road plant replacement is complete. Staff has replaced three hundred and sixty-two plants along Litchfield Road. That was just due to these past summer global heat. Everything burned out. Plant choices, we made some adjustments on drought-tolerant plants. So hopefully, those, those last a little bit longer than this last time. The Christmas tree drop-off, we placed it over on East Side of City Hall. That'll be completed on January thirteenth. West Coast Harbors will be out Monday to start chipping that away. So if anybody has Christmas trees left, make sure you get them out there. Then the Level Park restroom painting and repair project, I have it scheduled for January twenty-first. That's a Tuesday because MLK is on a Monday, and of course, staff won't be around. But this schedule might change a little bit because I'm trying to add an additional project to this. They may start on the twenty-first and then add on to after that for a day after. But we've had some graffiti issues lately, so we're trying to get this addressed as quick as possible. Other than that, that's all I have.
Are there any questions? Thank you, sir. Two more minutes. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy. The summer twelve minutes are in your agenda packet. And happy to have the chairman entertain the most whenever he's ready.
That's as written. Second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Those are accepted. Twenty twenty-five meeting scheduled. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy. This is a formality that we do at the beginning of each new year. RPG has been meeting the second Thursday of each month at seven PM here at the City Hall Conference Room. If you all are comfortable with that and continuing on that route, then I would say if someone would like to move to continue, that'd be great. The only caveat for this year is that it looks like State of the City may be happening on the same night as our March meeting, March thirteenth. I'll keep you posted. And if that's the case, then I would suggest that you guys cancel that meeting and instead attend the State of the City.
And our tree painting.
We do have our tree painting, yes.
Just make sure we cover everything we need to for the tree painting in February, between this meeting and next meeting. Go from there.
Same move that we keep our meetings the second Thursday of the month at seven o'clock.
Second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? Yard of the Quarter selection. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy. We had, this is Yard of the Quarter for the third quarter of twenty twenty-four that we're trying to finalize here. As you all know, last time, we had four nominations that were put forward for the commissioners to vote on. We had four of our commissioners go out and take a look at all the homes to vote. And the winning home turned out to be two oh seven North Nealan Ave, which also happens to be the home that was the self-nomination that just inched out the West Valley View Drive. So we will notify the homeowners. Have Kyle, once the homeowners contact us, get his staff to put the sign in place, and ask Chuck to go out and do his usual filming. You guys don't have anything for this fourth quarter. He decided not to do that due to the holiday home decorations. And so we are on track for twenty twenty-five nominations to start happening. That's the January through March timeframe. My suggestion would be so that we don't get too far out of whack, that we start nominate, like rounding up nominations in January. This way, you guys can vote in February and announce in March.
You did at one time. We had them set out, but then we had areas. Still have it here. Well.
Don't mind the area. It's the criteria that we kind of had.
I thought we did spring is sprung. We wanted to see flowers at this, at this next quarter.
So, just a quick look back first. Entranceway of the quarter, I thought it was, so my daughter and I went out. I think if we do entranceway of the quarter, which I love, by the way, I like the fact that we mixed it up a little bit and did something slightly different. I think that maybe the next time we do it, we look at the criteria, though, because there were some parts of the criteria that were more built for yard of the quarter than entranceway of the quarter. And I think it would be easier to vote if we did take a look at that. Looking forward, I don't know if we need to do that for spring is sprung because it does seem to include a lot about plants for yard of the quarter. So.
Trees in the next two nights, like the weathering just said, we might not have lots of flowers.
Yeah. Good point. I don't know. Should we push to the end of January, beginning of February?
To no, I think.
As long as we can get these nominations in a timely manner so that you guys aren't out there trying to vote on ones that were many months ago, and we can keep on a schedule. Maybe there's a better system. Maybe you take half the year that go sign nominations, and then the other half of you that actually go vote for that quarter or something, you know, like three fine nominations and four do the voting, and then you flip it the next quarter. And then, you know, opposite three fine nominations, so that it's not maybe feeling as burdensome? Just a thought. I'm trying to find a way to make it all a little bit easier for you guys to go through the process.
What area are we looking at this time?
Whichever one you want, because you guys.
We were just in the greens and, and the nomination from the city was closer to the Wigwam, right? So that would be like kind of south-central.
We discussed before, we thought we would take self-nominations.
Yeah.
We were gonna pull someone.
Right.
In order to spread the representation, we would go to whatever quadrant.
So if we were just at the greens, which zone would follow? Do we remember?
We were switching it up so that we didn't have the same season and the same zone every time.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to check on it. We'll have to kind of circle back at an email.
Then number generator, pick us as, let us know if something works.
I work just in zone three.
Seems like we haven't done north of Bird Lane for a while, whatever zone that is. I don't think we've been up there for a while. Because we did like west side of Litchfield Road in there, you know, Loma and all that. We've done that. We've done the greens. We've done kind of around my house, you know, Villanueva-ish.
Is that quadrant one? I feel like that's the one that we went.
I don't think we've been up that way, you know, Campina and those houses.
So let's, let's do that.
So I'll confirm which quadrant those fall in.
Okay.
And then if you guys want to make that your focus quadrant for this one.
What do we publish out there to get solicitations? Is that on social media? Is it?
It's on the website, and we put it on social. Every time Chuck announces the winner, he also puts the link to it and says, okay, for next go-round, here's where you nominate. We've been trying to do it that way.
So Bird Lane is zone one. Thank you.
With, flowers aren't gonna be out yet, so I think we just go general, general quadrant one. Let's look, let's look for what we like.
So would it be better to do?
Go for general yard appearance.
Zone one is actually Bird, and then parts of.
Oh, okay.
Villanueva up to Wigwam Boulevard, and then Wigwam Boulevard north to like Orange and Florence.
Okay.
Oh, so does it, does it include up, back up to Camelback, north of Bird? Okay, Orvisco and all. Gotcha, okay.
And I think that, why that zone is so large is because obviously Wigwam Golf Course takes up most of the section.
So we'll just call it Yard of the Quarter, general appearance. We won't necessarily say spring is sprung. And we'll look for nominations to come in prior to the next couple of weeks. Is that what we're thinking, prior to the next meeting? Is our goal to have the votes in before the next meeting?
Maybe we need to revisit that, too, because the quarter, first quarter, is from January to March. So we typically keep it open through end of March for the self-nominations.
Maybe we don't vote until March, in which case we could do spring is sprung. We could include that, like on a theme in it.
So I would say you still probably want to nominate in February, vote in.
Vote between February and March. We could get our votes in electronically. We don't need to.
Need a meeting?
Yeah, we don't need a meeting necessarily to declare the winner. Because that March, that February meeting, pardon me, would be when we're at State of the, pardon me, March. March meeting would be when we're at State of the City.
The next February meeting, you need to know what we're voting on, is the point, I think.
The question is, do we want to make it close for self-nominations before you guys go out and vote? So that you're voting at the end of the quarter.
Yeah, otherwise, there's no point.
Yeah.
People can also roll the self-nomination to the next quarter if we need to. We get a self-nomination after we start voting, and it rolls to the next quarter. That's.
Yeah.
Okay, so if something comes in.
March first.
March first, but you guys have already voted, that'll be, okay. Are you guys are good with that? I'm good with that, or about the criteria?
Not for them, because they don't, they don't know the criteria.
Nominate by end of Feb?
For the February meeting, you have nominations.
Oh, by, by Feb meeting, okay.
But then, once we have those, then all I have to do is give you the form. I'll give you an address form.
Sounds good. Are there any more questions?
Do we need to move and second the Yard of the Quarter, or no?
Um, yeah, please. That address for everyone again.
Two oh seven North Nealan.
Two oh seven North Nealan Ave.
And they've already added more landscaping this this week.
I move that we award two oh seven North Nealan Avenue the Yard of the Quarter for the third quarter of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And so it is. Twenty twenty-five Orange Tree Painting Event. Presenter is me. RPG Chairperson. So for the first discussion of the tree painting for the year, we already have the date. I'm curious about the materials. Do we have things on order yet, paint?
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. I'll, we'll make sure everything's there.
Fantastic.
Brushes, cups, gloves, paint shells. I still have the.
We don't need stars.
I have the stars from last year, so we should be good.
Awesome.
What? Can you also get like a case of paper towels? I know we had one or two roll. I know I brought a roll, and they went quickly.
We gotta get Brian to bring us mixer.
I bought one last year, too. We get a couple of them. Did you buy yours, too?
I did, just the last year as well.
Okay.
Yeah, like the, you put them on the power drill.
Yeah.
That was great.
Yep.
But having the plug-in drill was good because battery ones run out after.
Yeah, more power, too.
I do have a question. The, the pour cups that you guys carry around.
I, I do have a question. Um, the, the pour cups that you guys carry around for the paint. I can get smaller ones for the children. They, they have two different sizes. For the bigger ones, too big for the kids that are going around. Cause I, I remember somebody saying at one point that it would be nice to have the smaller cups for the smaller kids because they were dropping them, or they dropped them. They, they were wider, wider, but the smaller ones are.
I didn't see really little kids holding paint.
I'd say just put less paint in the cups.
Yeah.
I think bigger ones.
Be an easier answer, I think, too.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't recall there being anything, but if somebody reported it, maybe that, that'll be part of our intro. Like, hey, if you got little kids in your group, make sure when we're filling up the paint, we're only filling it up a quarter of the way at a time, so it's not wasted. Yeah.
We've been very lucky with the last few events that we haven't had paint everywhere, so.
I was, that was gonna be the ne- Sorry. Have it written right here, right under. So.
I liked last year.
I loved last year's, too. I don't know if, if it's, if you can just keep repeating the same design. I mean, I'd love to get some feedback on that.
Yes, so we can.
For the sponsorship sake.
As the new, we can change it out from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five if you like that one. You wanna look at a whole new style, we can.
Maybe change the color. Doesn't say the color, maybe.
Could change the color of the t-shirt.
Maybe gray or something.
Gray, baby blue, black, wouldn't be terrible.
I think the logo should stay and we just change the sponsors in the year and make it a tradition, you know?
Okay. Um, I think we did white just because people were painting with white.
Yeah.
But if you want to try a different color, we can see how it looks with a different background.
It really wouldn't change the pricing to have multiple colors, correct? So the same logo, the same work on the back. Well, the white may be less expensive, but then if we add in like a, like a baby blue or like a black also. Then we would have three versions of the shirt.
And then how are you gonna figure out who gives it?
Yeah, that's, that's, I would just do one color each year. Do one color each year. The five K or the triathlon and stuff like that. You have, you have to overstock on five.
We can look into a light blue or a light gray to see.
See what it looks like.
Makes a difference this year.
Try light blue.
Light blue is, is.
Make sure we get them like double X.
Yes, at that.
Possibly triple X for.
That might be the most off discussed point.
I, I have a truck.
And our, for our sponsors, is that we're just reaching out the same way. We have the same form, I'm assuming.
We've got some updated hard copy forms. I'll email you, um, PDF versions as well, so if you wanna email them.
Electronic.
And, um, I'll put the, the volunteer form back up online again. Just wanted to confirm that everybody was good with the date and the hours and everything.
I'll start reaching out this week.
We'll be back going again.
I'll start re- reaching out this week to volunteers, too. Just tell me the dates again. It's the thirteenth, fourteenth?
No, fifteen sixteen. And it's on the forms, too, if you wanna snag one of those forms.
It is right there, I'm sorry. Same timeframes we're looking at also?
Fifteen sixteen.
Seven thirty, seven thirty seven.
Seven thirty to twelve thirty, and then that gave us that like seven thirty to eight to get everybody organized. And then I think we sent everybody back around noon so that they had a half hour to kind of chill and eat or whatever.
Which was fantat- moving the food on Sunday to the grass next to the library was fantastic last year. Definitely make sure we were.
Yeah, so we'll, Pat and I will reserve the front lawn of, or the lawn of the library so we can do that again. Both days is the same time. Mm-hmm.
Is there anything we're missing?
Um, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. Um.
I'll say.
We'll check on, um, how soon we need to, what our deadline is to order t-shirts. So that we can get back to you guys on a deadline for sponsors to commit and give their logos to us. I think that's probably something that we need to do.
Perfect.
Do you recall how much these shirts were last year?
I'll say like six or seven bucks per, at bulk.
We want to be generous a little bit more because, wait, I mean, well, now we have the logo. It's, yeah, it's the multi-color on the front. And also one fifty. I mean, you guys think it's a lot, but in terms of what, uh, the vendors think, that's not much, so.
Do we wanna put a date on it or did you leave the date off and just change the color each year and then we have a supply? I mean, how many do we have left over? Is there?
Not a ton because, um, we gave away a bunch to those who had sponsors to give to sponsors. Remember that? I would have to go look, but it's not a lot.
So we'll get pricing. We'll work on sponsors. And we'll have that to kinda discuss in February also.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that was.
Cause if they're sponsored one year, yeah.
Yeah, I, that's what you had.
And does an email go to groups that volunteered previously and just says, hey, we're doing it again?
Yes. Now that we have a good listing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll reach out personally to some of the small armies, too, and make sure we're, you know, in touch with them early, early and often. Is there anything else for now? Think we're okay.
Yeah, we're gonna start with those tasks and then revisit in February if there's any other details that need to be talked down.
Looking very forward to it. Again, I would encourage everyone to go to the City of Litchfield Park Instagram. Look at the Instagram post of the tree painting. I think by now it's probably at, I don't know how many comments and some views.
That's right.
It is a riot, too. You won't be sorry. Commissioners support on current events. This is the time commissioners may present a brief summary on current events. The commission may not propose, discuss, deliver, or take any legal action on information presented pursuant to that law.
Commissioners. Uh, Christmas decorations look great, so I'm sure it's collaboration that the field that goes up. I like the stuff we have out front. It's been very, uh, very cold, but not wet. So I wish we could say it was wet and rainy. It's like a hundred thirty days, so I don't know, I guess, y'all know this. It's dry. It's super dry. It needs rain badly.
Commissioners fix?
Um, I, I echo what he said about the Christmas decorations. They're absolutely gorgeous. I'm proud every time I drive into our little town. Um, I really have nothing else to report other than that.
Same on the decorations. Thank you very much for all, you're in the team, it's hard work. We got to do a, a very short, um, but very awesome tour of the new park the other day, thanks to Trish. And, um, I just wanna say I'm so excited for the first event that's gonna be there, hoping for March, I think. So looking really forward to it. Very much so.
Is it other Christmas decorations? Well done.
Yeah, Christmas decorations are nice. Um, and attended Christmas in the park. That was a good event as usual, so good job to staff on that. Nothing else to report.
Got nothing to?
Thanks for everybody. Topics for referral to city council. Are we referring anything? We're not, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that just leaves one thing left.
Motion to adjourn.
Again, any questions? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.